Trying to. Because we have a quorum that's Randy Skippers.
It is six fifty-eight.
Yeah, let's, let's slow foot it just a little bit. We might have to. Frisbee. I'm still waiting on Colin. We certainly want him.
He was, he was here.
He's here.
Okay, just a second.
There he is.
Hey Colin.
Hey guys.
Let me, um.
There's Tim.
All right, Ryan's coming in. Hey Bill, wait, I, I'm still checking on one thing, okay?
Hanging tight.
All right.
No, got at least, uh, two minutes roughly.
Roughly two minutes, that's right. There's Ryan.
Good evening, Gail, how are you?
Very good, good to see ya.
So Danny needs to get a computer with a camera in it.
Yeah, he does.
So we can see you, Danny.
Well, we're having problems. Mine crashed and I went to a backup computer and now I'm on Karen's. Oh. Sorry.
Yeah, with everybody working out of the house, three different offices in here, everybody's trying to. I gotta clean out, scooch everything out of the way so I can get in here.
I can finally see my desk.
All right, just a second, um.
Oh, you know what? I don't think Julie's gonna be on today. I think she went up some, someplace for her birthday.
Okay, give me, give me, give me one quick.
It's seven P M.
Yep, just. Oh. Okay, let me, uh, make sure I have a roll call sheet ready.
You got the, you're gonna do the American flag?
Uh, yep, I've got, uh, I'm in a foreign spot. And so get, bear with me here.
All right, when the flight, the flight comes up, we'll call the meeting to order.
All right.
This village council meeting for Monday, November sixteenth. We're calling it to order and if you all join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic which stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible.
Hey, we'll take a moment of silence and then Mr. Mallory will do the roll call.
Okay. Starting, uh, with the roll call. Trustee Reaster.
Yes, I'm here.
Trustee Keller.
Here. Here.
Thank you. Trustee Holmes.
Here.
Trustee Merrill is excused. President Pro temp Frisbee.
Here.
Trustee Bailey.
Here.
President Adams.
Here. Okay, we have an agenda tonight's meeting. Are there any modifications or additions to the agenda? And I thought, Jimmy, you mentioned what you wanted to switch some things around?
Um, well, the one we might add, add, uh, in appearance if, uh, they're able to log in. Um, the legislative session at the state is going on, so we might add someone as we go, but. Um, as of right now, um, I will just add a thirteen C. And an update on, uh, the offer of the accounts payable position. Uh, I'll announce that tonight.
Okay, and do you still want, uh, under nine, uh, village president's time, we're gonna do the trustees first, village manager and then the village president? Is that correct?
That is, that is, that is correct.
So the village president will be nine C.
Correct.
Okay, with that, I'd entertain a motion for approval of our agenda.
I'll, uh, make that agenda so.
Their support?
I support Reaster.
And moved and supported, we'll do roll call.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Keller?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Yes.
President Pro temp Frisbee?
Yes.
Trustee Bailey?
Yes.
President Adams?
Yes. Okay, with that, uh, I don't show any scheduled appearances, Jim, is that correct?
Uh, that, that is, um, correct.
And are there any public officials on the call tonight that need to be recognized?
Uh, not at this time. I'll, uh, let you know if one bumps in or not.
Okay. Uh, then it's citizens' time for agenda items only. Are there any citizens? If so, please raise your hand so, uh, Mr. Mallory can see it and he'll call upon you.
Um, there. Whoop, I thought Mr. Ritzma had a hand up, but it was actually my cursor, so I don't think he does. Um, I do not, I will unmute Mr. Ritzma to make sure I didn't. Yeah, I will get with Jeff after, um. All right, I see no hands, uh, Mr. Adams.
Okay, then it will be, uh, trustee time and we'll, the trustees, uh, talk in, in order, and then Mr. Bailey will be the last of the trustees to talk for village managers. So that's a little reversal of some previous discussion. So can we start off with our, uh, ladies? Gail, you wanna lead off?
Sure, um, this is kind of an, an interesting time with the pandemic and everything, and I really wish that we could be together for tonight. Um, but we can't, so we do it this way, and I just wanna wish, uh, Colin, Godspeed, because I've really enjoyed working with you, Colin, and I've been enjoying, uh, sitting next to you and getting into trouble with you. Um, and I know that you're gonna go on and do great things, so thank you for your service. For, um, being eight years, that's a really long time, so thank you so much. And of course, um, with Bill, Bill, um, it, it goes without saying, um, that you have been an integral part of the improvement in the village, and, um, I have so much respect for you and admiration for you, and I know that you and your wife will have a wonderful time. I hope you're gonna play a whole lot more golf, and I know you'll stay involved in the community, so we will miss you on the council, but I know you will still be around, so thank you so much for your service too.
Thank you. Uh, after Gail is Carl Keller?
Uh, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna basically tack on to what Gail said. Uh, Colin, I really appreciate the last two years that I've been able to work with you on the council. Uh, you helped kinda get my feet under me when I, I first came on, and I appreciate that. Uh, Bill, your leadership, the last two years that I've been on and, uh, while I was on the planning commission before that, I really appreciate all your involvement, and I know you're still gonna be staying engaged. Um, that won't go away, which is a good thing. I, I, I think everybody should still be involved in our, our community, so thank you both for everything you did.
Thank you, Carl. Uh, Rick Holmes?
Uh, I agree with both Gail and Carl. Both of you, thanks so much for your service to our community. Um, you don't realize how much time is invested in these positions until you're actually in it. And subsequently, in looking at the number of years that both of you have, you know, committed to the community, um, through the generousness of your families as well as your devotion to the community, obviously, um, you know, a lot of, lot, a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of effort went into that, so, you know. Colin, good luck to you, buddy. Um, and, uh, Bill, sure I'll speak around the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Around the putting green.
You got it. Uh, let's see, Mr. Frisbee?
Well, more to say later on, but specifically to Colin, you know, thanks, thanks, buddy, eight years. You know, you gave me the, uh, the courage to step up and, and, and take a little bit of leadership within this community and now I know I've spent a lot more time here than you, and I figured if you can do it, I can do it. We're gonna miss you. Thank you for being, you know, it, people don't realize just how much time this takes out of your life. You think, oh, one meeting every, every couple of weeks, but as we all know, it's far, far more than that. Anybody that steps up and takes on these types of positions has my admiration and, and thank you.
It's them.
Hey, and then, uh, Colin, I think that brings it to you.
You guys know I generally don't have a whole bunch to say, um. I'm that true to tonight, you know, we started a long, long time ago, Bill, eight years ago. And I was quoted in the paper actually saying that I was gonna be protecting my investment that I made in the village of Vicksburg. I, I moved here and ten months later, I'm on the board of trustees, which was just awesome, say, awesome journey, and you guys are a great group of people, and this isn't goodbye. I'll be around, just, uh, move on to some different things in life and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll see you guys. I appreciate every, everybody you.
Uh, Mr., Mr. Mallory?
Yes, sir, I do appreciate that, and, uh, this is a unique opportunity and one of the reasons I truly love politics, I love the framework of everything that, uh, sets us up as a village. And, uh, we had the opportunity, um, and I'm going to first, uh, ask, uh, Alex Lee to read, but, uh, we contacted the governor's office and in a very positive way, uh, our state senator as well as our state representative and the governor herself, uh, recognized both Mr. Bailey and Mr. Adams' contribution, uh, in serving citizens of, uh, Vicksburg, so first I'll turn it over to Mr. Lee, uh, and these are on behalf of Governor Whitmer coordinated through, uh, Senator McCann's office. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory. My pleasure to read into the record of State of Michigan's special tribute to Colin Bailey. Let it be known that this is a great pleasure to extend our congratulations to Colin Bailey upon his retirement from the Vicksburg Village Council. The last eight years on the council, Colin has illustrated his dedication and work ethic as a trustee on behalf of the people of Vicksburg. His absence will be deeply felt by his colleagues in the whole city that appreciate his efforts. We are indebted to public servants such as Colin who create a positive impact in their community. Colin served as a trustee with a platform of good communication, responsiveness to the issue, and implementation of a well-thought-out plan. Colin understands the importance of cooperation and hard work to alleviate people's worries and create further opportunities. In the past eight years as Vicksburg Council trustee, Colin has helped to vastly improve the financial outlook of the village. In twenty twelve, before Colin was trustee, the village of Vicksburg was struggling financially and in need of a modern master plan. Now Vicksburg Village has a general fund unrestricted reserve balance of over fifty percent, an updated master plan, and an overall improvement in morale. The work of Colin and his colleagues has altered a community that was once in financial turmoil into a well-oiled machine. Now Vicksburg is a place of choice for businesses and entrepreneurship, creating jobs, a dynamic downtown for residents and visitors alike to enjoy. Similarly, Colin and his colleagues have changed what was once the community with a decades-old parks and recreation plan and no investments into downtown development authority, a thriving space for individuals and businesses alike. Colin has helped the council invest in infrastructure, including over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of roadwork completed, a new municipal parking lot with twenty-nine spaces, over one point five miles of non-motorized trailways, and over twelve million dollars in infrastructure work on sewer and water. As a result, the village continues to reap further benefits. Colin's efforts have helped set the groundwork for Vicksburg to continue to be one of the fastest-growing communities in the state. Clearly Colin has more than exceeded his promises when he took office to alleviate people's worries and assure the people of Vicksburg that their future is in good hands. In special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to honor Colin Bailey and his accomplishments as Village of Vicksburg Council trustee. May he know of our admiration and appreciation for his valuable contributions to our community. This is offered under the signature of Sean McCann, State Senator, the twentieth district, the one-hundredth legislature at Lansing, November sixteen, twenty twenty. And it is a very nice-looking certificate, Colin, that we will put in your hands at.
Beautiful.
That's awesome. Thank you guys very much.
Yay.
And, um, Alex will read the next one, and then I'll have a few words, and then, uh, we'll have something, uh, before, uh, and I'll introduce something, uh, before Bill's comments. So Alex, if you can read the next one, uh, from Senator McCann's office as well as the governor, please.
My pleasure. State of Michigan's special tribute, William Adams. Let it be known that it is a great pleasure to extend our congratulations, William Adams, upon his retirement from the Village of Vicksburg Village Council. For eight years, William served Vicksburg families with due diligence and integrity as Vicksburg Village Council president. William's sound leadership as well as his attentiveness to communicating to constituents and responsiveness to issues at hand and his implementation of sound solutions and well-thought-out plans to whatever the con, uh, the community needed will be sorely missed. We are indebted to public servants such as William who strive to enrich their communities. William's fiscal improvements on behalf of the town of Vicksburg highlight his tenure as a public servant. When entering office, the city was near bankruptcy and village morale was low. The only master financial plan was from two thousand and one, and it was severely lacking a capital strategic or fundraising plan in place. Under William's leadership, the financial prospects of the town of Vicksburg increased profoundly. William created and later updated a strategic financial plan for the village of Vicksburg in twenty thirteen. William's initiative in developing solutions led to the general fund reserve balance to increase to over fifty percent. Under his leadership, the morale of Vicksburg citizens increased as the village regained financial stability. William's tenure as Vicksburg Village Council president led to the spearheading of many public works projects. William revived the Vicksburg Downtown Development Authority, which created and provided business facade grants over the past seven years and created the Vicksburg Vision Campaign that raised funds for local projects. The revival of the Downtown Development Authority has led to the coordination and completion of many public works projects for Vicksburg as well as raising and providing money for honorable causes. In addition to revitalizing, revitalizing the Downtown Development Authority, William authorized an investment of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the roadwork and a second investment of twelve million in sewer, water, and storm system. Under William's leadership, these developments improved the infrastructure of the village of Vicksburg for all of its citizens. In special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to honor William Adams and his accomplishments as Vicksburg Village Council president. May he know of our admiration and appreciation for his valuable contributions to our community. This is offered under the signature of Sean McCann, State Senator, the twentieth district, the one-hundredth legislature at Lansing dated November sixteen, twenty twenty.
So, yes, uh, Bill, we have one, one more thing and, uh, um, try to be brief, but I certainly want to, um, thank you for all the time, uh, in the continued time in the future, the coffees on Monday and Wednesday mornings. Um, and, and your, your ability to juggle the finances and, and give proper advice in mentoring has, has been very impactful the last four years. So with that in mind, again, we're relying on an IT guy here who's not an IT guy. Um, we have something for you. We asked for everyone's patience and, and listen, but we went around and, uh, solicited some comments for, uh, President Adams, and if I can just bear with me, I practiced this. Here we go. And Alex knows to give me the thumbs up if he hears the sound, so.
Congratulations, Bill, on your decision to retire. It was Tom Peters who said, organizations exist to serve, period. Leaders live to serve, period. When you ran for president of the Vicksburg Village Council, you knew the job would be hard, but you didn't know how hard it really would be, nor the challenges that you were gonna face. Yet during this time, you brought transparency, accountability, and most important, passion to this role. You created partnerships so that you could ensure not just short-term problems were solved, but long-term problems as well. You focused on having a healthy financial future for the village of Vicksburg. You established new leadership that would live on past your time on the council. You were a visionary in ensuring that the village had a chance at a bright and prosperous future. I remember when we went to the state together to discuss with the tax officials some of the challenges of the village. It wasn't a fun meeting. There were a lot of problems, but at one point the officials turned to me and said, Margaret, if all communities were this open and honest about their problems, we could help them solve them much more quickly. We wouldn't have to take interventions. And because of that honesty, the village of Vicksburg quickly turned it around. It's been great to work with you, and as your senator, it's been great to work for you. So as you look at retirement, I hope you can reflect on your time with happiness, everything that you didn't just endure, but you succeeded in doing for the residents. And I hope you know the many partnerships and friendships that you created. They don't just exist today. They exist for the future. So it's been an honor to work with you, but I'll say most importantly, it's been an honor to call you my friend. Stay in touch, have a good time with your wife and your family, and we wish you the best.
I want you to know how much I always enjoyed and appreciated our frequent, uh, village update breakfast sessions with Yogi. You are always very prepared, open, and very candid. As a trustee, as trustee of the Vicksburg Foundation, uh, it was a great value to me as the messenger in helping keep our board up to speed on what was happening in the burbs. On behalf of the trustees of our board, we extend a great big thank you to you, Bill, uh, for your dedication and contribution to our beloved village of Vicksburg. And by the way, Bill, the next practice is on me.
Bill Adams and I joined the Vicksburg Village Council towards the end of two thousand and twelve when certain irregularities in village management were beginning to emerge. Drawing on his experience with best practices in the private sector, Bill undertook a mission to document these irregularities and institute corrective actions. The steps taken by Bill restored confidence among Vicksburg residents in their local government and its representatives. Bill has consistently been a forward-looking advocate for community and private sector development in the village. Thank you, Bill, for helping to make Vicksburg a great place to live, work, and retire.
Morning there, Mr. Adams. I see you finally decided to retire from politics. You had eight years in, it was a good run. Actually, I thought you'd go twelve sixteen. Cause you're always full of the spunk and gumption to go do it. I'm sure it was interesting eight years, as I know the first four was when you and I was there together. We stepped into quite a mess. I will say we got, you got right in and went for it. Kinda remind me of, you kinda remind me of Vicksburg Donald Trump, always on the move, getting things done, full ambition, always willing to help. I really admire that from you, and I always have. Uh, also I admire your dedication. It's something hard to come by nowadays. Well, I only have a minute, so good luck on your non-governmental life. One more thing, if you, uh, get out and get around, stop and say hi to this whole fat man sometime. I enjoy talking to you. Thanks. Good luck.
Hello, Bill. Congrats on your retirement. Thank you for all your service to the village. Appreciate everything you've done over the years. I have a lot of respect for a guy who can take as many arrows as you did over the years and just keep on going. Which I very much appreciate your positive attitude through all of that, and, uh, we couldn't have done it without you. You're a great leader, and we have a lot of appreciation for you, Bill. Thank you so much.
Bill, Jenny and I'd like to, uh, thank you for your, uh, leadership for the village of Vicksburg, for the staff, and for your vision, uh, that you, uh, put into place, uh, years ago, uh, is, uh, a vision we, uh, all now take responsibility to see through. Thank you again, and, uh, it's been good working with you.
What I appreciate, Bill, Village President Bill Adams. I appreciate your relentless pursuit to promote Vicksburg as a destination, as a great place to live and to visit and to be. You tirelessly put the village first above and beyond what would be considered just the normal of a village president. Uh, across the last eight years, you pushed the envelope, you encouraged people like myself to get involved. You served with passion and enthusiasm and grace, and I know that it absolutely won't stop here. Thank you so much for all that you've done, Bill.
Hey, Bill, thank you for everything you've done for the village, and best of luck on your next adventure.
Hey, Bill Adams, it's Mary Balcoma, your Columbus County Treasurer. I wanted to congratulate you and your public service. You had a great run, you had a great partnership. We worked on many projects together from the mill to the golf course, to, um, buildings that were foreclosed on in the village of Vicksburg. So from the bottom of my heart, I wanted to thank you for your wisdom, your leadership, your good humor, and all of the work we've done together. Thank you.
Well, hi, Bill. Um, guess where to start? Um, Bill, you, I, um, met you about eight years ago, uh, when we opened the Rise and Dine. Um, you were one of the first. You were one of the first people to come into the restaurant when we opened up. Was really happy that the round black table was back open so that all the boys could come back in and meet. Whether you guys discussed politics, whether you discussed who had the best golf shot the next day, or whatever your wife's projects had coming up this weekend. I guess knowing you, Bill, has been a great thing to me, watching you conduct your meetings at the councils, allowed me to get into government with the village here. You've been quite an inspiration to me in using your values there. So just really glad to have you be part of your life and good luck to you.
Hi, Bill. This is John Palasic. I was asked to say a few words about you in tribute. And I look back and I thought, well, I remember meeting you 15 or 20 years ago in Marjose at the Table of Knowledge. And I quickly learned that you were a deep thinker, an innovator, a very positive person. But most of all, you were inspiration to people. You inspired me, and I'm deeply grateful for that to get me involved in things that I maybe wasn't going to be getting involved. So I that's my tribute to you that you inspired me, and that's something I'll always treasure. Stay safe, my friend.
Hey, Bill. Matt Schenkel here. Wanted to just let you know how much I appreciate your passion for this village. That became very evident to me the day I moved in next door to you. And you came waving me down on my lawn tractor and wanted to talk to me about village business and regarding my experience from my previous municipal experience. So I think the village is better served having you at the helm over the past several years. And certainly appreciate all the effort, the time, the experience that you put into the village. It certainly shows where we're at now as a village and as a municipality. So thank you for what you've done and the time that you've invested, and it certainly is not going unnoticed. Take care, Bill. I'll see you around the neighborhood.
Hello, Bill. I just want to take a minute to let you know how much fun and I appreciate your service to our little corner of the world. It started several years ago with your vision on what this community could be and how it could be run. Then it took great courage and leadership on your part to get involved and to take action to demand accountability and to force some some tough choice decisions early on in the process. You are an influencer. You were able to convince more good people to step up and get active in our community. You have driven consistency and transparency with integrity that should live on beyond your years of service. So I give a thank you to you for all you have done, and I'll see you out on the golf course, my friend.
Hi, Mr. Adams. Tom Hamm, founder of Renssens Golf Management and PGA Master Professional. Wanted to congratulate you on your tenure with the village of Vicksburg. Wanted to thank you for the opportunity of assisting the village with the Angels Crossing Golf Club project, knowing that you've been involved from the very start of the club. I appreciate and respect your commitment to the Angels Crossing Golf Club project. With your newly found time, I will expect that you'll be enjoying more golf and maybe some game improvement. Again, congratulations, and I'll see you at the court soon.
Hi, Bill. It's State Senator Sean McCann coming in with a quick message of thanks and appreciation to you for your great service to the Vicksburg Village Council. Eight years is very appreciated, and I know how thankless of a job it can be sometimes, but you've left a great impression and done a lot of great work, the Downtown Development Authority and so many other things. So thank you and enjoy your next chapter and whatever you do, and best to you.
Bill, how has it been eight years? Can you believe it's been that long? You've done so much for the village. We all want to thank you for everything you've done, your effort, your enthusiasm. Certainly, we can all agree that nobody hustles harder for our little village of Vicksburg, and we all appreciate it so much. And I hope that after your time is done being village president, that you have a little bit more time to relax and enjoy Carolyn and golf a whole lot more and just enjoy some time, well deserved. So thank you for everything you've done. We all appreciate it.
Hey, President Adams. Chief Sanderson here. Just wanted to take a moment on behalf of the Vicksburg Police Department to thank you for all your years of service here within the village of Vicksburg. Think what I appreciate most is your dedication to making Vicksburg a better place for its citizens to live, as well as making the village a destination village within the area for people to come and visit and see what a great town it is. Once again, thanks on behalf of the Vicksburg Police Department and good luck with your future endeavors.
Hi, Bill. Hey, if you're hearing this, it must be that you are stepping down as village president, but I'm I just want you to know that the things I really appreciate about you is your creativity, your honesty, your selflessness, the fact that you're not a hornblower, you don't suffer fools easily, and the fact that you're a real straight talker. I also respect the fact that your work ethic, being a person that doesn't have to come in and work. You choose to. You're tireless worker on behalf of the village of Vicksburg, and you're one of our one of our greater assets, truly. I guess what I want to say is our loss is Caroline and your family's gain. And I just know you're just a phone call away. So thank you so much.
Hi, Bill. I just wanted you to know I appreciate everything you've done for the village in your years as village president, and you've earned the respect of everyone for all the progress made in the village. We've moved forward in a very positive way. Thank you.
Hi, Bill. Wanted to thank you for your many years of service to the community, both as a council member and also as a Rotarian. Think that's one of the things that I really appreciate about you is that over the last couple of years as a council member, I've seen firsthand how you do work behind the scenes on events and in areas really to make the community a little bit better for everyone. Also, I think through this, what I have come to also appreciate is really how much you care. And I think that's one quality about you, Bill, that all of us could learn from, and that is to try to slow down, listen a little bit more, and more importantly, open our hearts up and really care about those that we work with as well as our community as a whole, because that's what this is all about, right? So thank you, Bill. Look forward to continuing to work with you and moving forward. Godspeed, my friend.
Bill, to one of the best team members, congratulations on your retirement from the village of Vicksburg Council. We really appreciate all that you have done. You took on a really tough job. One of the other ones really needed you. You will be missed. Best wishes on your next adventure.
Bill, I'd just like to say congrats on a job well done. I think you have been an awesome village president. The thing that I appreciate most about you was when when I decided to run a couple of years ago, you made me feel very included once I got on the board. And I really appreciated all your your advice and your consulting. The thing I respect most about you is that you really really went out there among the people in the village and worked hard to get things done for the betterment of those communities. So as I said to you, hats off. I know you're not going to fully retire because you're still going to be around, and I still am going to look to your advice on things from time to time. But I I wish you the best and hit them straight.
Hey, Bill. Thought about listing all your accomplishments, but they won't give me an hour on the video, so I'll just say thanks for everything. You'll be missed, Mr. Adams.
Eight years we've been doing this, eight long years. I think anybody that knows you in this capacity realizes that you came along at a much-needed time, and the work that you've put in is much appreciated. I think that the residents, citizens of this village are going to get the ripple effect from what we've done here in the past eight years for the next half a century. You know, I really respect your work ethic, your dedication, and your ability to bring people together and get things done. Bringing people together these days is not an easy thing, and you successfully did that delegated and found right things for the right people and made things happen. So lastly, I personally want to thank you. You took the time to hold my hand through a lot and introduce me to a lot. And I've grown a lot because of that, because of you. So I really appreciate you. This village really appreciates you, and best of luck.
When I was asked to say a few words about Bill, the first thing that came to mind was that he is our idea man. Not only does he foster ideas, but he has the ability to get things done. Bill has enthusiasm and heart for the Vicksburg community. He joined the village council when there was a need to move forward. He was instrumental in the hiring of our current village manager, which has created a village with policies in place and a healthy bottom line. Even though Bill will no longer be on the council, I know that he will continue to be active in this community. Community, like I said, he's our ideal man. The foundation has been set for the new council to carry on. Thank you, Bill, for your service to this community, and it has been a real pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Bill. To Bill Adams. Thank you for the leadership, the time and your dedication to this community over the last years, Bill. It's been tremendous. You've been a great example. Thank you for your foresight. Many years ago, with seeing what the air conditions financially this community was in and stepping up to the plate and taking lead and getting the right individuals and positions that needed to be filled. Thank you for your recruiting skills and going after our village manager. And I believe getting one of the best administrators and accounting, if not the best administrator and counter to take over our financial and obligations to the state and the residents of this community. Thank you for chasing me down and others that have been on the council that you you recruited to take the lead role in the development of this community. Thank you for your mentorship, for giving me the confidence to go forward with this endeavor. Thanks. Good luck. I'll lean on you. Look forward to you in the in the future, and thank you for all you've done.
Bill, all the good things said about you tonight, you've certainly earned. Can't tell you how much we've appreciated your leadership as our village president since 2012, for me specifically since 2016. It'd be my wish that all the citizens could have seen all the coffees we had on Monday and Wednesday morning, the passion you always displayed, wanting everything best for the residents, both in fiscal responsibility, but also for for people who lived in the village to be proud of the village and have it in a direction that was moving forward. Can't thank you enough for all the guidance and advice you've given me, just leading by example and and truly heartfelt, passionate love for this village. So on behalf of everyone at the staff and especially the Mallorys, including Stephanie, thank you very much, Mr. President, and enjoy some time on the golf course.
Mr. Mallory, can I can I just get one minute in?
Yeah, yeah, just a second here. The whoop whoop. I hit the button. One. Randy will unmute himself. We have too many leaves falling in this village. And you're trying to track him down with a cab corner, so it's far better. We're going to end with Mr. Randy Skippers Live, and then I'll have a few words, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Adams. Randy, are you there?
Yep. You hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. I just wanted to pay my tribute to Mr. Adams. I enjoyed the last eight years, all the wonderful things he has done for the village of Vicksburg and for the DPW department. I mean, he has done a ton, all the fundraisers he has done. We're going to miss him. And that's for me and my entire department. Congratulations, Bill.
Thanks, Randy. I did want to conclude with Colin Bailey. Colin, you said you're a man of few words, but but over the last four, I've had the opportunity to talk to you on on a weekly basis, one-on-one. And I I think you your impact in whatever your endeavors in the future are are going to be tremendous, and and those entities should should certainly be appreciative. As I tell, you know, if you gotta go out and recharge the batteries, we have another election in 2022, because I I think Mr. Lee and I were in a conversation a week ago, and between the two of us, I don't know what what almost 75 years in government, and we're going to lose two good ones in in the community, but thankfully they'll be around for advice. So thank you, Colin. And and Bill, I truly mean it from the depths of my heart. I think people you came in contact with in your role as president certainly had the privilege to see your passion for this village, and I know that'll continue. And it's well-earned with the family time that you've lost over the eight years. We certainly respect and admire everything. So with that, Mr. Adams, I conclude the village manager's report and turn it back to you.
Okay. Well, I was going to reminisce with Colin a little bit on what we've been through in the past eight years, and it's a real pleasure to have served with Colin and with the other council members, especially Colin, because he stuck around that whole time. In 2013, we made Ken Skippers our village manager. And he used to come to the office every day. And many of you know, he'd say, you can't get any worse. And then it got worse the next day. One of the lowlights of our emotional roller coaster was the first audit in 2013, and it was discussed a little bit in your presentation. But we got a letter from the treasurer of the state of Michigan at that time saying we had a deficit of $450,000. And we needed a deficit recovery plan in 30 days. Well, bless their soul, it was Mary Balkama and Margaret O'Brien, who was on the video in the beginning, that worked with us, and Margaret went to the Lansing State Capitol, and we met with the Treasury Department. The we was Kenny Skippers, Richard Dykstra, that was our treasurer at that time, and Tracy Losi. And they made it real clear to us at that time, not to show you what it was like. You either go bankrupt and your property goes back into the township. You hire an emergency manager, or you can convince us that you can solve this problem yourself financially and go on quarterly financial reporting. So we did that, and in a year's period of time, we turned around the $450,000 deficit and brought us back to more than break even. How were we able to accomplish this? Back then, our financial review showed us that we were giving away $600,000 in hookup and collection fees on our water and sewers. And of the water and sewer that we pumped, we couldn't account for in the billing process 35%. And when you're running about a $1.5 million business in water and sewer, that means you're losing $500,000 a year. $1.5 million business in water and sewer, that means you're losing $500,000 a year. And the state only allows you to be off by five percent. So we researched it, where the leaks were, where the bad meters were. We put in two hundred meters. We changed some of our accounting procedures, et cetera, et cetera, and turned it around now, finally under Jim's capabilities to where we're pretty much up to snuff. We meet the state requirements. The golf course, when Colin started with the council and Rod Smith was there, was consuming another fifty to $100,000 of funds out of the brownfield or in due to due froms from water and sewer or other places in our funding. The council put in place a business plan with the golf course, opened a restaurant, raised fees, cut costs. They got it into the black. Most recently, we all know that Tom Ham and Renaissance Golf has really helped us a lot in the quality of the facilities, and this year I'm hearing rumors we're up over twenty percent in rounds of golf. The clubhouse that was built at the golf course, many of you may forget, was approved to be a $550,000 structure. We turned out spending $850,000, just like all the other projects, right? No. $300,000 over budget. And back in those days, we had an interest rate of over nine percent. What's nine percent on dollars? Real easy to figure. And we had $2 million in investments sitting over there. We quickly reduced those interest rates down to something, I think, around four percent. The village at that time, too, had three lawsuits against us. And many of them, nobody seemed to realize they existed. Two of them were with regards to the paper mill. And I learned one of my big things in settling the suit, the lawsuit on the paper mill. Mary Balkama grabbed my arm one day and said, you're gonna meet me at the bank, Michigan Commerce Bank, and we're gonna settle this lawsuit. Get there fifteen minutes early and got there fifteen minutes early, and Mary briefed me on what we're gonna do and sort of watch her. She gets out of the car with a two-foot diameter Tupperware pan, about two inches thick. And she goes in and sets them on the vice president's desk at the Michigan Commerce Bank, and she says, I want you to know I was up at 5:30 this morning baking these cookies for you. And needless to say, we settled the lawsuit out of court. Vicksburg Foundation helped immensely there because it was a $100,000 settlement out of court. To Kenny Skipper's credit, the council's credit back then, these were big problems. They were discovered. They were worked on and they were solved. None of them happened immediately. Some of the problems persisted until Jim got there, and Jim had to put his hand on some of those problems. In 2013, we also did something that I think helped with communication. We involved the citizens of the village of Vicksburg, about a hundred of them, into a two-month-long process of building a strategic plan. Looking at the strengths and the weaknesses of the village, and then identifying the key issues that we wanted to work on in the future. Back in 2013, obtaining funding for water and sewers and public works was one of our big goals and objectives. Correcting the billing and the lost revenue stream from the water and sewer helped a lot. And then we set a plan to sell the real estate that we weren't using. And we sold out the business park at Leja Park to help fund some of that stuff, put money back in our coffers. The mill. In 2013, the big deal was the lawsuits. We've raised the funds with Vicksburg Foundation. And many of you know, at that time Sue Moore was so emotionally tied to the mill. I think she went crying to Chris, and Chris became interested in, in the mill. And the rest of that story doesn't need to be told. The Angels Crossing turnaround now, I think, is, is pretty well in the books, and I think it can be a significant asset to us in the future. One of the other strategies that we had to work on was youth development, and Ken Skippers was the champion of that project. And he, he did two unique things. He did a gap analysis, looking at other communities to find out what they had that we didn't have. And then he also engaged the Cub Scouts or the Boy Scouts to do a survey of the middle schoolers. And they must have come up with a hundred ideas, from all the way from Kool-Aid drinking fountains to skateboards to et cetera. But the one thing they voted number one was finishing the trail from Vicksburg to Portage. They thought that would be cool. And as many of you know, we finished that trail this spring. As part of the fundraising project and government grants, I think we well, well up over $350,000, which allowed us to build the trailhead and finish the east portion of the walk downtown. Each of these key projects, we kept reporting on on a monthly basis to keep everybody aware of their importance. Repurposing the hospital, and there were a couple other things that we had there. In 2016, we really got ambitious about our financial situation. After Jim Mallory joined the organization, and we were able to address first the police and safety issues within the village of Vicksburg. Did such a good job, we brought him on as village manager. And in August of 2016, forming the Financial Steering Committee and working with Secret Crandall to identify all of our opportunities in the financial area and getting those in very, very good shape, allowed us to put away probably about $400, $450,000 a year, where we're very, very healthy today, I feel as a village. I am stepping down. I want to thank everybody, especially in, in, my list was done ahead of time, Kenny Skippers. Kenny was Mr. Vicksburg. He is still loved today. Ron Smith, Dr. Smith, contributed tremendous amount of time. And Randy Skippers and Chad Skippers. At the day I sat down with you guys at Angels Crossing, I think we had lunch, and you told me what was going on in the village. I walked out of that building crying. And then I want to thank Jeff Becker, who was on our council. Jeff was a guard at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. And Jeff had the ability of not putting up with the crap when it came to financial reporting and demanding a clear understanding of things. I keep asking Jeff, are you getting a clear understanding? He says, hell, no. And then I want to thank the people outside, and one of the great things about this job was meeting Mary Balkama, meeting Margaret O'Brien, and seeing how dedicated and enthusiastic those people were. Lee Adams, who was with the county of Kalamazoo County, but later moved on to the director of the Upjohn Institute. Don Alsch. Ted Belique, the past president, mayor of Portage. Margaret Kirchip, Christina Audrey Powers. And then there's one guy, one rascal I call him Wes Schmidt, and I don't know whether to think Wes or not. Wes told me to get into politics, Bill, it's easy. He was at one time the president in Schoolcraft. And Wes says, I'll help you out. I got, become president over here. I says, Wes, come on over and help us. We need financial help. He's looking, look at it, and he says, Bill, it's too ugly. I don't want my name attached to it. So I especially want to thank the council members now that are remaining. I have tremendous faith in Gail Reaster, that she'll provide the moral compass for the village. Kyle Keller, that'll keep us going on a straight line, policies and procedures. Julie Merrill's not here tonight. I expect her to be our compass in trying to get proper senior living. Rick Holmes, it's been a string pleasure to talk to you and work with you, and I look forward to our working together in the future. Your ability to communicate and listen is great. And Tim Frisbee. We've run for office before, and you're right. Somebody said, hey, I had a hand in a lot of the people who are there. I feel like you're all my brothers and my sisters, and that you'll do a fine job going forward. And it will be even stronger in the future. So I got two things to ask. One is if you need my help, let me know. I'll try to help if I can. Tim Frisbee knows some of my interests. And then my final ask is, we're working on this thing called Christmas Card Lane, and we're trying to raise $1,000 so we can have a Christmas card from the village council. And I think Lee Alex told me this morning that we're still a few hundred dollars short. The people that would, said they would contribute and haven't yet know who they are. We need those contributions, a check at the village office made out to the village of Vicksburg with a memo note. Christmas Card Lane, I think. So with that, I'd like to thank everybody, and I gotta look at the agenda. I think we're ready to turn the meeting over. Mr. Mallory, just we're in the new council.
Okay, and first up will be Mr. Wagner. If you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan Wagner.
I, Ryan Wagner.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Vicksburg Village Trustee.
Of the Office of Vicksburg Village Trustee.
In and for the village of Vicksburg.
In and for the village of Vicksburg.
County of Kalamazoo and State of Michigan.
County of Kalamazoo and State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Denny Olson, are you ready? If you can unmute.
Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand, Denny.
I have it all, believe me.
I, I trust you. And repeat after me. I, Denny Olson.
I, Denny Olson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United.
And the Constitution of this state.
And institution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Vicksburg Village Trustee.
Of the Office of Vicksburg Village Trustee.
In and for the village of Vicksburg.
In and for the village of Vicksburg.
County of Kalamazoo and State of Michigan.
County of Kalamazoo and State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Gail.
Yes.
Do you raise your right hand? I, Gail Reaster.
I, Gail Reaster.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Vicksburg Village Trustee.
Of the Office of Vicksburg Village Trustee.
In and for the village of Vicksburg.
In and for the village of Vicksburg.
County of Kalamazoo and State of Michigan.
County of Kalamazoo and State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you. Mr. Frisbee. Can you raise your right hand? I, Tim Frisbee.
Timothy Frisbee.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Vicksburg Village President.
Of the Office of the Vicksburg Village President.
In and for the village of Vicksburg.
In and for the village of Vicksburg.
County of Kalamazoo and State of Michigan.
County of Kalamazoo and State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
President Frisbee, the meeting is yours.
Thank you very much. I, I just hope that I can hold up the standards that have been set by our previous president, and thank you, Mr. Adams and Colin.
You guys, approval of the general consent agenda ahead of us.
Mr. Frisbee.
Read the minutes. The warrant reports were sent out today via email. There's an Adam Martin graduation request, and there was no correspondence, so if everyone has had an opportunity to review and to accept the motion.
Yeah, I just want the record to reflect that the warrant report and check register totals equaled together, and that amount was $201,000. $201,463 and 58 cents. And as you stated, it was sent out. Thank you.
Do I have a, a motion for the approval of the general consent agenda?
Trustee Keller, so moved.
Trustee Wagner, support.
I, Mr. Keller and Mr. Wagner, support. Very good.
We need a vote.
And we'll take a roll call vote. Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes. Yes.
Trustee Merrill's excused. Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
Yeah, and that is approved.
So we'll move on to item thirteen, Mr. Manager's report. Mr. Mallory?
Yes, real, real quick, the update on 22nd Street is we anticipate paving to start Wednesday and to have the final coat on yet this week with good weather. Doing some road prep to finalize it today, but the project is on schedule. And will continue. The road should be in hopefully by close of business Saturday, but to remember the project veers off to the west into the field, so there'll still be work correcting that issue up until the first week of December, but the road will be back open as we sit here tonight by close of business Saturday with good weather. I can answer questions if there is any on 22nd Street.
Well, you made a comment about correcting an issue. Is, is there something that's arisen that wasn't part of the overall scope?
No, probably the overall scope is what we're, but no, it's, it's on pace.
Okay.
Mr. Mallory, it's, it's Trustee Holmes, just a quick question. Regarding the, I, I, when I looked at it yesterday, I noticed that it was going through the field. How far into the field does it go, or does it follow the road down?
No, it goes.
Sense of how it connects up with it, with the development is all.
Yeah, it goes into the field a couple hundred yards and then turns north into the field. The village owns that easement as that was plotted.
Yeah, it go goes into the field a couple hundred yards and then turns north into the field. The village owns that easement as that was plotted planted out a while ago. So I'd say twelve to fifteen houses to the west of the road is where it comes up through the neighborhood.
So trustee Wagner, I I take it it's it's coming pretty close to your house then.
Uh, pretty close.
Trustee Holmes, it it comes through my side yard. Yes, that is the final easement.
I thought so. Has the uh the main connection been switched out or are they still laying in that?
No, that that'll be done once it's completed. Um and there's some work work up there that that will be done, so.
Well, hearing no other questions, you've got an update on Well Five?
Yep, that is back, has been thoroughly serviced and uh is back online, serving the village. We uh will couple of things there. We'll be reporting at the next meeting what the capacity and pump situation improved to. We'll have those numbers at that time. And we'll also uh be taking um here in the near future uh manganese uh sample or a water sample and test specifically that well again just to see if that had any impact for that continued data collection. But I wanted the council and the public to know that that is back online and serving in the village.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Mallory?
Okay, and the final is uh we did offer uh the accounts payable position. Um and welcome and we'll have her at a uh future, probably the next council meeting. But uh Diane Gilligan uh has been offered and accepted the position. Uh it'll be a little bit unique. Michelle and I'll work it out at the start. We're look targeting uh December second to start uh with the latest um uh coming out of this the state as it relates to COVID. Will probably be in a position uh to do that remotely. Uh but we'll work that out before December second, but I wanted to let the council know that position has been offered and accepted.
Good news, Jim.
Yeah, it was a good process. We uh had a total of eight applicants. We offered interviews to six. I want to thank Gail for participating in those interviews and the entire staff. Alex, Michelle and Denise also participated. And it was everyone's unanimous consensus that we just think uh not only experience and knowledge, but uh will gel well with the team as we move forward. So we're looking forward to that.
Well, you had a good team during the interviews. Thank you, Alex and Gail, Michelle. Uh we go to fourteen, the citizens' comments. They see Jackie is on the phone. She's has anything she'd like to. Jackie. No, looks like she unmuted and remuted. I don't think there's anyone else on the line, is there, Jim?
Nope, like usual, Jeff. I'll stick on with Alex for a couple of minutes after if you have questions. Uh.
Then Danny's no longer a citizen. Oh, there's Jenny Holmes. Jenny.
Jenny Holmes.
I'm Danny Olson.
Um, just wanted to let you know that the Park and Rec um committee did have another group of volunteers that moved many of the plants that were going to be, I guess, thrown away when the streetscape project happened over to Sunset Beach Park. Um I encourage you to go and look and see the where the grasses were relocated to. And I don't know if anyone else noticed trustee Wagner's wonderful looking, small town, proud shirt that he wore in the tribute video. But the Vicksburg Historical Society is offering those again as a fundraiser due to high demand. So if you go to their website, you'll be able to see the link to order those shirts.
Jenny, I just want you to know that I really like my new sweatshirt. Gonna wear it at Harvest Festival. Hopefully, hopefully.
Just got an email this morning that there was enough of them sold that they confirmed the order and they were going into productions. So it ought to be relatively quick. And and Danny, I didn't mean to cut you off, but you're not anymore. So we'll give you your due time. That's. Nothing else. There's President's time. I make it short and sweet. I thank the community for having the trust in me to uh take this adventure on. And uh I've got enough hill climb ahead of me to keep up with the successes of Bill Adams. So that's the high watermark in my mind. So if I can get there, I'll I'll be a success. So thank you. Thank you, Bill, for everything you've done. Colin Bailey, awesome job. Really appreciate it. I want to continue a relationship, you know, uh above on what we've had here. Thanks. Thanks for all the hard work you you have given to this community. Um I need to get to know where this table, black round table of knowledge resides. So I could take part of those things. It seems like that's and that necessity be in this position. So that's it for me. So I will open it up to Mr. Keller.
Uh just would like to give my heartfelt thank yous to former President Adams and to uh trustee Bailey for your years of dedication and hard work. Um as said before, everybody here knows when you get elected, that that's when the fun's over because then the work starts and it's not just a a twice a month meeting. There's a lot of other meetings that you're involved with or or other issues. Um I want to say congrats to trustee Wagner, trustee Olson and uh the reelection for trustee Restra. It's I'll be looking forward to working with all three of you on this council and um obviously Rick and I aren't the newbies anymore, so.
Speaking about Rick, Mr. Trustee.
We're just two old guys, Carl. That's all we are. And by the way, President Frisbee, I like saying that by the way, there's an age requirement for that table and you're not quite there yet, but we'll.
Pussy has to work.
Yeah. That is what Carl said. Welcome to the new trustees. Um you know, the one, just a one word I'd share with you, that is enjoy the journey. It is the journey. It's not a sprint. Um it's one of the things that uh I can share with you that I learned when I came is that there's so much knowledge on this council and um that you can tap into and and leadership that um and that's one of the things I also learned is that we are a team. Um there's nothing that gets done um within this group unless we we all hold the lesson and we figure it out together. Bill, uh I still want a dozen balls from you. I don't know why, but I still think you'll form to me. Um and I'll collect from you in the coming years. One one last thing I want to say is this Saturday. Carl, correct me if I'm wrong in this, but the Lions are going to have a cleanup day at the historical village. And if anybody's interested, please, please join us um to to do something like that. That's in preparation, I also think, for the uh Christmas card lane as well. So please stop down Saturday morning and and join us if you're interested.
Thank you for that, Rick. How about trustee Reaster?
Well, I, you know, I I am so excited about having two new people on the council. I I think that you both do a great job and it'll be fun to work with two new people. I'm going to miss sitting next to Colin. Um when we get back to um meeting together in Colin, I want to thank you so much for helping me with my technical stuff that I, you know, I don't know much about. Um Bill, it's just been a real pleasure working with you and I know I know you well enough to know that you are not gone. You will be around. And so I know that we can depend on you to help us. So um I'm just really excited about hopefully getting back to working together and meeting together again. But probably not for a little while yet. But thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And trustee Wagner.
Thank you, Tim. My first one of these. Um just gonna start off. I'll keep it pretty brief. But thank you to everyone for all of the robust encouragement and support. I'm pretty sure I heard it across the board, pun intended. Um so thanks for giving me that that step I needed to get involved. And I'm really looking forward to sharing that passion and commitment with you all to move the village forward and to play my part, hopefully continue on the legacy of Colin and Bill and the previous trustees to see just how wonderful we can really make this village. So uh thank you all for your past contributions and I'm looking forward to building on that.
Thank you, sir. And Danny, I know you've waited a long time to hear this, but trustee Olson.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Um I want to say that I'm proud to be joining the council. Um it was President Adams that uh got me to start fireboard meetings when we were going problems there. And I know it was a rough patch, but I think that the fire department um is now better because of it. I'm proud of Jim, uh Scott Sanderson. I think he's a great addition to our community. The only thing I'm sad about is is that oh, five people ran for the council seats and three people won. This year, three of us ran and and all three of us run one. Um I would have been happier if it would have been um three seats and twenty people running. And then if I'd won, I could have went nah nah. Um anyhow, it's I I don't like to quote politicians, especially Barack Obama and sixty ages in this country have to come from when and they have to start in the small communities uh like ours and and small community mayors and the councils and they lead the way. We need more people in in the community. We need more volunteer uh involved. Right now I sit on two committees, don't do much, but I know that if something's that I'm there. Um I'm looking forward to joining uh one or two more committees. Um and um the fire authority will always be my baby. Um I it it's a deep passion for me. Public safety has been. So with that, all I can say is congratulations each and every one of you. I I cherish each one of you. And Alan, uh you're my bud. Um if I need you, all I gotta do is throw a rock and hit your house. Bill, stay out of the sand traps and may every ball you hit be a hole in one. You very much.
Um excellent words of wisdom by everyone tonight. And and Danny hits it on the head. You know, we need more community involvement. We need more people to be involved in in what we do daily here. So I like I like that idea. Thank you all very much. I appreciate everything everybody's done on this uh committee and and Bill and and Colin, what you've done. I I think we've all said it, but probably can't say it enough. But look forward to uh a new day, a new team. I'll be reaching out to you here really quick. Bill's given me a list of things we've got to take care of. So keep in your minds of different areas that you'd like to get engaged in. And we'll let Mr. Adams in one time. Sir.
I forgot to pass on something. There's a water and sewer meeting tomorrow and it's only going to be conducted by Zoom. And Tim, I don't worry. You picked somebody to represent the council on that. I could sit in tomorrow, but I whatever. Uh I think Kyle Keller's been sitting in on some of those meetings and Rick.
Oh, I was the I was the alternate designate, so uh I was I was planning on, I was planning on hopping on the meeting.
Okay, it's it's Zoom only. They said it was going to be some face to face. That was canceled.
Bill, may I ask you, would you would you forward that Zoom meeting to me?
Yes, sir. Uh Carl, do you have it also?
Uh yeah, I can. I'll pull it up. I'll send it to you, Tim.
Thank you, officer.
Uh I think I've still got it, but if I don't, then we both. Get it.
Carl will get it, Bill. Thank you.
As soon as we get, as soon as we get off this, I'll pull it up and I'll send it to you.
Thanks. So keep in mind all the different committees and what we've got out there. Danny's expressed his passions and uh I'm gonna reach out to each one of you and see what roles and responsibilities you'd like to take on. So with that, welcome. Congratulations. And we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Mallory.
No, thank you, guys.
Have a good holiday, everybody.
You as well. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, Jeff, uh I'll go ahead.